Are we waiting for somebody else? Meeting call the order, please. Please join me in salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the public where it stands, one nation, America, liberty, justice for all. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Here.
Mia Chow?
Here.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Here.
Mr. Dakota?
Here.
Ms. Doherty?
Here.
Ms. Lay?
Here.
Ms. Martin?
Here.
Seven present.
Three minutes. Need a motion to approve the minutes of the special and regularly scheduled meeting of February 2nd, 2022, and to place them on file by Ms. Thompson, second by Ms. Mon, on the favor say aye, opposed say no. The ayes have it, the motions carry. Three point two.
Yeah, those are good. They're together.
Okay. Four motions.
Mr. Mayor, if we could ask to take out of order item, I think it's six three. Six three or six two. Yeah, my glasses on.
Okay, you want to take?
Because we have someone here to speak.
Okay, just six.
The recommended update to the school mask protocol.
Okay, sure.
If you could take that out of order.
Motion by Ms. Mon, second by Ms. Doherty, to take six point three out of order. Motion is approved. Six point three, consideration of temporary adjustment to the student attendance policy. Or six two, I'm sorry, six two. Consideration of City of Lowell health officials' recommended update to school mask protocol. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the update to the mask protocol, as you will find with the, as a theme of this agenda, is timeliness for information for our community. There was an update to the recommendation from the Department of Elementary Secondary Education that would lift the mask mandate, the universal mask mandate, as of February 28th. This is your last meeting prior for us to give information out to the community. My recommendation continues to be to follow the advice of health officials when we're making health decisions. Ms. Moffett, our citywide lead nurse, as well as Jason McCreeven, our interim safety coordinator, are both here to share with you both the recommendation as well as the impact on schools. If you, if I could, Mr. Mayor, I would like to invite Ms. Moffett up to share with you the Health Department's recommendation, and then Mr. McCreeven is here if there are questions about the impact on schools. If that works for you, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Dr. Boyd. I'm not sure if anyone has any questions about the letter that was in the packet, but we also are alongside Dr. Boyd that we've been following the recommendations from the state and from Desi since the start of the pandemic. And we continue to do so because they do certainly make sense to us and the data is supporting it. I think it's time that we move on. The, it will be a personal choice in schools, so if anybody is not vaccinated and wants to wear a mask, that's fine. Anyone that is not comfortable with it, they can wear a mask, it's personal choice. Again, we definitely promote vaccinations. We think that vaccinations are the way to go at this point and not what we were doing prior. We've learned a lot since the start of the pandemic. We have, we have vaccines, we have treatments, so it's, it's, it's time to lift these, let the kids get the education that they need.
Mr. Superintendent, if you don't have anybody to speak, I do have two registered speaker as well. Madam Secretary, if you have those people.
Thank you. Adam Ferreira?
Good evening, everyone. A smile is contagious, right? Thank you for having me here, members of the school committee. Thank you. Superintendent Boyd, thank you. Mayor Chow, thank you. My name is Adam Ferreira. I live at 321 West Meadow Road in Pottecaville. I have three children in the Lowell Public Schools, and I'm also a mathematics teacher at the Lowell High School. Now, I've not spoken at a community meeting before, so I am a little out of my comfort zone, but I felt that this agenda item was important for me. I want my feelings to be known to this committee. Now, there are a few different things I could talk about. I could talk about the non-renewal of the mask policy by Commissioner Riley. Of course, he consulted with his medical experts. The memo from the Lowell Health Department and Lowell Board of Health stating they recommend going with the updated mask policy. Or I could talk about the studies themselves regarding mask use and their effectiveness on preventing COVID spread in the classroom. But I'm sure most of you have seen or heard all of these, so I won't go into that. What I wanted to go into is something more to the heart. I wanted to talk about smiles and smiling in the school. As I said in my opening line, a smile is contagious. When someone sees a smile, they are usually inclined to smile back. The benefits of smiling have been studied extensively. Someone who is smiling is more approachable, more, more trustworthy, reassuring, and helps to facilitate good relationships and feelings. Seeing a smile can trigger positive feelings to help cheer someone up and improve, improve one's mood through the release of endorphins. Because of this, a simple smile is beneficial to one's teaching. It helps students feel that they are connected to the class, which helps them to engage in their learning and that their ideas matter. Unfortunately, my children, as well as all of Lowell's children, have not been able to see smiles at school this entire school year. As a parent, I want my kids to see others smile at them, both teachers and other students, so that they receive the benefits previously mentioned. As a teacher, it is difficult to understand students when they are contributing to class discussions because it's just hard to hear them. And it can also be challenging to know exactly which student is actually contributing to the discussion because I'm not seeing their mouths along with the words. In past school years, I have used my smile to put students at ease, and this lets them know that they can count on me. When walking in the hallway, I would smile at students that I don't even know just to brighten their day. Through this school year, we have been working extensively on SEL improvements for our student population through trainings and workshops. These are especially important since, according to studies and surveys of our own student population, we have seen a rise in anxiety, depression, and students feeling disconnected with our school. Although the focus on SEL is helpful and beneficial, I feel we are missing a very important piece, and that's having that face-to-face interaction without masks like we used to do. At a time when mental health has been at an all-time low, we need all hands on deck to use all strategies available to us to improve the mental health of the students, including being able to see smiles throughout the day. I strongly encourage the members of this school committee to support Desi's decision to go to a mask optional policy so that smiles can be shared at school again. Contagious smiles, spreading positivity through our schools is needed now more than ever. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Madam Secretary, do we have another speaker?
Monica Lundberg.
Good evening. My name is Monica Lundberg. I am at 12 Alyssa Drive in Lowell, and I am a parent of a third grader. I'd like to begin by noting several facts. Fact one, COVID case rates at both the state and county level are higher right now than they were from the start of school through mid-November. Fact two, Lowell General Hospital's current overall adult bed capacity is 95% full, and ICU capacity is 100% full. Pediatric capacity data is not available. Fact three, current transmission rates locally and statewide. No, I read that one already, sorry. Fact three, 41% of Lowell children aged five to 11 have received no vaccine. 24% of Lowell children aged 12 to 15 have received no vaccine, and 38% of Lowell youth aged 16 to 19 have received no vaccine. My commission, my question to the committee, and really to the local and state officials whose guidance has departed from the federal and international recommendations to continue universal masking in schools, is this: Why are we moving the goalposts? Why is it okay to take away the masks now? When we're still only where we were in November? That said, there's another issue I'd like to bring up as well. And I feel like a broken record at this point, but it needs to be said again. Instead of charging ahead with yet another rushed change, let's take a pause and consider how to transition deliberately. The main argument I've heard for the need to end masking is one citing students' mental health. The Lowell Health Department's own memo included in tonight's packet says, quote, "Masking in class is affecting some of our most vulnerable students who have special needs, autism, ELL, and social-emotional needs," end quote, as part of their justification for removing the mask requirement on February 28th. I am a parent of one of those vulnerable students, and I'm here to tell you, if you care about the mental health of vulnerable students, please stop making last-minute policy changes. An extremely common social-emotional need for neurodivergent students is a need for consistency, for routine. My own daughter's IEP includes the accommodation, quote, "pre-warning and assistance with transitions," end quote. We don't have, we didn't have the option of advance warning when the pandemic began. We do have that option now, and begging you, use that option. Next week is school vacation. We have two school days between right now and February 28th, the proposed date to end the mask requirement. Two school days to prepare kids for a highly visible change in routine and expectation. Two school days to make a plan for students whose anxiety will be escalated by being around unmasked peers all day. Two school days to figure out how to keep track of which kid's parents want them to wear masks and how to enforce that. Two school days is simply not enough time to make this change in a way that does not put unnecessary stress on teachers and harm the mental health of many of the very students his policy change claims to prioritize. If the committee decides to follow state rather than CDC guidance and set a date tonight for removing the school masking, mask mandate, please, I beg you, don't set that date for February 28th. At a minimum, give us two more weeks. Let our teachers and our families enjoy our school vacation and then take the time to do this with sensitivity. No one benefits from rushing. By taking that extra time, we can make sure that the students who rely on routine for self-regulation have the opportunity to be prepared for this big change. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no other registered speaker. Now open up to the, the school committee members for any discussion or questions.
Mr. Mayor, is it possible for me to respond to some of that?
Absolutely, Ms. Moffett. Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. So I do have some numbers with me. The cases this week, Friday, we had 33 in Lowell. Monday, which was a three-day total, were 57, and only 15 were under the age of 18. Tuesday, we had eight cases, and Wednesday, we had 41 cases. The positivity rate in the schools remains to be below 2%. The hospitalizations at Lowell General COVID patients right now are 20 to 30. We weren't exactly sure of the number they gave us. It was 20 to 30 COVID patients, two of who are taking ICU beds, so that's not, you know, the hospital fullness is not related to COVID. The immunization rates, five to 11, we have 38%, 12 to 15, 75%, and 16 to 19, 61%. That's the first dose. So we have the percentage of the second doses, but of course, it's not as accurate because not everybody is due yet for their second dose. So we are definitely on a good path with vaccinations, and I think what we really want to relay here is that vaccinations is the way to go. And again, if somebody is unvaccinated or immunocompromised, they need, they, they need to do what is right for them, and they need to wear a mask. But everybody shouldn't have to do the same thing. I did have a kindergarten teacher reach out to me, and she mentioned to me challenges that are going on in schools. ELL students are having a harder time learning English. She's seeing a lot of speech delays in younger children. They're not able to do phonics like they typically do. They need, they don't hear as well. They're not seeing the teacher's lips and the words that they're forming, the letters that they're forming. And we don't know what type of an impact that's going to have on these kids. They, she said she's referred more students for articulation issues than she ever has in her, her career. So there are some very significant things that are, that are happening here in regards to inequities. I mean, some kids come to school and can, can read at an early age. Other children come to school, they don't have the support at home, or they don't have preschool education, and they're coming into school and they don't know a letter or a number. And these children are having a very difficult time with that because of masking. So I think that's, that's an important issue as well. So again, we want this to be personal choice. If somebody wants to wear a mask, we are in total support of that. There's many different reasons to. In the nurses' office, the health office, everybody will have to be masked in the health office. So we'll have masks outside the door, people will have to put one on.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor, and I have a question through you to Ms. Moffett, but before, I would like to start by saying, I totally support the idea of getting rid of the masks. I know how challenging it's been for our students, our staff. But I also really hear what the speaker had to say about this sense of rushing it, and I'm wondering if, and this is my question to you, Ms. Moffett, if we delayed implementation to March 7th, and at that time, it would be optional because I would never want to say, "You can't wear a mask." It certainly, if you are a vulnerable immune system, that has to be an option for you. But in terms of people coming back from February vacation, it just gives another week, and I guess my question is, do you think there would be some kind of irreparable harm in just delaying it one week so that the schools have an opportunity to communicate with the students and the staff? How is this going to work without it being flipping a switch? You know, you come back, and we do have the reality of during the vacations, when people are out and about, traveling, maybe they're going to go south, whatever, the, the risk of, of infections increases, right? When that happens, after the holidays, we see an uptick. So I just would like to ask what your thoughts are if we just said, because the state is lifting their thing February 28th, it doesn't mean we have to lift it February 28th. And I'm just thinking to buy another week, give our, give the community a chance to understand where we're going with it.
I mean, my feeling with that would be they're going to have a week at home, and I think that should be their transition period. I mean, first of all, most of these kids are back in sports and they're in outside activities, and they're out there not wearing a mask. To me, it's, it's getting to a point where school is the, is the place where they're wearing a mask and they're not wearing it anywhere else. So if they're at home for that week, their, their parents, their families can transition these children that when they get back into the school system, they're not going to have to wear their mask unless they want to. If there's a child that feels better wearing the mask, then they can wear it. But I think that parents could work on, you know, work on this at home before school gets back in. I don't, I don't really know that it's going to make a difference for the kids, and kids are so resilient, to, to have them come back for a week and wear masks and then take them off.
Just to follow, do you think that we will see an uptick in, in the number of people testing positive after the vacation as we have seen in the past?
I honestly don't know because I really do think that, that this virus is, it's, it's all up and down, and right now, we're on a down slope, so I'm hoping that we don't. I mean, if people travel to another state where it's higher, you could see it, but I don't see it as being a very big issue. Are we going to see upticks in the road? Yes, I'm sure we are down the road. And again, I was on a DPH call about a month ago, and they were really saying we should switch from this being a pandemic, it's no longer a pandemic, it's an endemic. It's a virus, and it's here to stay with us, and we need to learn how to live with it, and we can't live like this forever. So could there be? Yes, I, I know I saw on the news tonight that they have not identified any new variants right now, so that's a good thing. So we could be in the clear for a bit, and I think it's going to be some type of a seasonal virus, but I don't have a definitive answer.
You done, Ms. Thompson, and then Ms. Del Rossi?
So I have several questions through the mayor to you. One of them was about, I think it was the last meeting, we had something about the fact that the district was going to make every attempt to hand out kits, and I haven't heard about that as of yet, so I'm concerned about that. And then also, if there was a Khamay video that was made, because again, the issue was that the video was not, that was on the regular website, the state website did not have Khamay as a translation. So I had those two questions, but additionally, I'm curious about what has been put in place for the immunocompromised. So if there are students that are immunocompromised now that everybody won't have masks on, is there a waiver for those children? Because they're, the, the reality is they could now have more of a situation where people are not, they're kind of letting their guard down. So if they're a little bit sick, they're not really thinking about it as much, they're kind of hoping that it goes away. And then the last question, I'm sorry, all these questions, was about self, the self-regulation component that I believe Ms. Lundberg spoke to. I know that there are certain schools that already are having issues without having full staff, and I'm curious about what has been thought about, about the self-regulation component with students kind of having a hard time letting go of the masking. And kind of to Ms. Doherty's point, I do see the, I'm one of the people that did ask about having an additional week for that just time period. I know that people are going away, people are talking about, they want to get out of here. So I know people are going away, and my fear is to the teachers, and it's one thing to kind of have a conversation at home, but they're not in the, they're not in the environment that the transition is happening. So I think that even though the parents can talk to them about the transition, the actual transition is not happening in the home, it's happening at school. So for the teachers to be able to say, okay, this is going to be your experience, or kind of walk them through it, and for the teachers to have the respect of that as well is kind of what I'm thinking about. So I'm sorry, there was a lot of questions.
Okay, so for the immunocompromised population, we definitely encourage, which is, you know, a recommendation, that they do remain masked, so they are protecting themselves. So the immunocompromised should remain masked. So the immunocompromised should remain masked. As far as the self-regulating, you mean as far as taking off the masks, again, it doesn't have to be in a day. If a child is not comfortable taking that mask off, they can have it on as long as they want. They might take it off for a little bit and decide, I'm not comfortable, I want to put it back on. That's okay. So it can go at the child's pace. It doesn't have to go at our pace. We're saying it's a personal choice. If you want to not have a mask on, you don't have to have a mask on. Does that answer that? Okay. And Jason, do you want to speak to the other couple?
Thank you. In regards to the take-home kits, we're proud to say that we're giving out tomorrow four thousand nine hundred and thirty-five kits to nine hundred twenty-five staff and three thousand eight hundred and sixty-eight students. That's a two-test kit that will be going out to all the families that have opted in. Our opt-in rate is now at twenty-eight point four percent for the entire district, which is actually more than what we had for our pool testing. So within just one week of implementing this, we have more participation than we do with pool testing. A letter went out to families today in regards to when to take the at-home tests. We're recommending over vacation, take them on both Sundays. They'll get it tomorrow, they can take it the first Sunday, and most importantly for all of us, they can take it the Sunday when they, before they return to school. They have several ways of letting us know if it's a positive case. That can be through a Google form or contacting the school. Many schools actually put a tag right on the kit itself. All of the kits are the iHealth ones as well, where they can contact the school. In regards to the directions in different languages, in Khamai, we have written directions. DESI is still trying to have production of a Khamai video, but that's something we can work on internally if we can't get an answer to that as well. But we do have written in that language. We have a video that has very few words. It's more pictorial in helping the families. I'm trying to see if there was any other questions I didn't answer. Oh, one thing to add on is, so they'll test Sunday and Sunday. But the nice thing is, we have another distribution that's happening the Monday we come back. So everybody will receive a test the Tuesday right after vacation. And then going forward, we're going to ask them to take them on Tuesdays. So families, because of the coming back from the vacation, Sunday, Sunday, Tuesday. So we'll be sort of overtesting as much as we possibly can right at the beginning to catch any cases due to vacation.
Mr. McCreeven, while you have the microphone, if you could, if we can take advantage of the fact that you are in dual roles, put on your other hat as principal of the Washington School. What you're hearing from your colleagues as principals and also teachers, is there a concern in terms of transition? Or are you hearing any feedback there that might be helpful to the committee as they consider this conversation?
So I've been a principal at a school for sixteen years in Lowell, and I've always had a CSA program, children in, with students with autism. Most of the feedback, and I'm not speaking for everybody, I'm just speaking from the families that I've spoken to, are very, very excited that in sub-separate settings, that children will be able to take their masks off. For a lot of children with special needs, they need to be able to have facial features and learn the facial features and to learn in general, whether it's academic or social-emotional. So the feedback I've gotten is that many families are excited about this in special populations as well.
Ms. Thompson, you all said. Ms. Del Rossi?
Thank you. I just wanted to, I have a child in a sub-separate classroom as well. And it's not a CSA classroom, it's a language-based classroom. But within that, he has a great deal of anxiety about everything. And a lot of our kids are anxious. Many of our kindergarteners don't know anything but masks, and that's all they've known. So we're going to see a heightened level of anxiety with pulling these masks off. I know I'll see it with my own child. I think when the speaker spoke about pre-warn transitions, that's something we have to take into consideration, because in a lot of IEPs, there are warnings for transitions, and this is a big one. I'm all for it, don't get me wrong. But in listening to the input of the speaker and just the fact that we need to be aware of the heightened anxiety overall, I guess. But thank you, that's it.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess my first, my first question, probably more directly to Ms. Superintendent, if that's more appropriate. When we look at the data that goes down, is that number, the test that taken at school, or would you, would you count the number of people who called in sick, say, I can't go to school because I have COVID, and they're out for two weeks? Is that number counted in the number of cases that reported here? The reason I ask is that the number may go down if you had to take a test at school, but actually, if the kids are staying home and they're not counted, then we may, this number may not reflect the real, the real COVID cases in the city. So if that's, would that be something? Do you understand what I'm talking about?
I do. Mr. Mayor, is it okay to respond?
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. We actually, Mr. McCreeven tracks all of this data for us. So he does all of our data tracking, as well as our uploading and reporting to the state. Mr. McCreeven, can you share a little bit about the criteria and the parameters of that data?
Yes, the chart you've been provided is on a weekly basis, and we match this to match our DESI reporting. We input all confirmed cases on Wednesdays at 5:00 PM. So what you see there is a week in a six-day cycle, a Thursday through Wednesday. So this is throughout the entire year, you can see confirmed cases that are reported to our dashboard. That could be from in-school exposure, that could be through pool testing, test and stay, and these are also reported cases from the outside. But all of these cases, as you can see, it's sort of in a cycle right now, where we started at the beginning of the year. I think the number on that first week is about thirty-one cases from September ninth. And now, today, we just finished the cycle at 5:00 PM. That's included right here, and that would be forty-one cases. Does that answer your question?
So if a student, since they got rapid testing at home, they can test at home, and then they found themselves positive, that is counted in here?
That would be counted here as long as it was reported to us. Okay, that's always the challenge. If it's reported to us, the principals enter it into a dashboard. These are the numbers from the dashboard, and then we report it to the state.
Somehow, that concerns me, that it may not reflect the real number. But anyway, for me, I love to smile at people, and I love to see people smiling back at me. So, and both speakers speaks really well, and I really want to think that what Ms. Doherty said earlier, that if we give ourselves a few days to catch any positive cases before they go to school, we may be able to keep the mask off a little longer. The worst thing is, happen is, when we come back from school and we take our mask off right away, what if we, the case goes back up, are we going to put our masks back on? So if we can wait a few days and just to catch a few cases, that way, that way, we, when we take our mask off, we hopefully mask off until the summer. So that's my opinion. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Lay, you all said. Mr. Christopher Ferreira, senior class president?
I know that I saw this on the agenda, and I spoke with it with a few of my peers at the high school. I know that there's a lot of mixed opinions on this, at least on their side. Me personally, hearing both of the speakers tonight, I think everyone has said, like, extremely valid things. I feel like smiles are very important, and I feel like we also should take precautionary steps to prevent spread after vacation. However, I am like more on the side of the precautionary steps, as Mr. Lay just said, to prevent us having to reinstate the mask mandate in the event of an uptick. I feel like delaying it by a week or until the next school committee meeting to discuss it and like see where the numbers are, would probably be the most beneficial, because while there are issues, there have been issues throughout the whole pandemic regarding student social-emotional learning and being able to interact with each other and their teachers properly, just delaying it a week, I don't really see that as having like severe negative effects. And I think just weighing the benefits of each option, delaying it a week, by a week, it would just be better.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I think I'm going to echo what it seems like the position we're driving towards. You know, first off, I do want to thank our representative from the Department of Public Health. We have relied on their expertise and their counsel throughout this. And I think that it has, they have given us extremely solid and good advice as we've made kind of our way through this uncharted territory. I do think part of the issue that we're hung up on right now really just comes down to timing, and it's a matter of where the February vacation falls. So I really feel like, you know, we have seen increases after vacations. I think that's been a pretty typical, you know, expectation over the course of the pandemic, endemic, picademic. And I think it seems to me, as I'm listening to the arguments on, you know, as we kind of take in all this information, to me, the idea of saying that the Lowell Public Schools will drop its mask policy as of March seventh, giving ourselves that extra week so that they, so that students, staff, families have the time to move into this new, this new position, I mean, I think that's a rational choice. And I think it takes into account all of our excitement. I mean, let's be honest, that we're actually having this conversation right now. It seemed impossible even two, three weeks ago that we'd be having this conversation. So I think it's really extraordinarily good news that we can talk about dropping our mask mandate. And I think the idea of giving ourselves and our families an extra, just that one week, to come back from vacation, let the testing protocol do what it's supposed to do, and then be able to move into this new era of removing the mask mandate from inside of our classrooms, and yet still allowing those students and those families who want to remain wearing masks, they always have that option. So that would be my recommendation to move forward, to give ourselves the extra week of, and drop the mandate as of March seventh.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Listening to all of the comments and listening to the Board of Health, that, again, like you said, Ms. Martin, that they've been offering us tremendous guidance through this entire pandemic. I know that the general feeling is, within the community, that we've got to get rid of these masks as soon as possible. I get it. We're road weary of this whole process, and I can understand that. And I empathize with them. But the reality, I think, is that we have a quarantine period that has been established, and I haven't heard it being altered in any, in any way, so that if we postponed the, our unmasking day by a week, that will put us closer to that quarantine period that they talk about, that would make it safe for everyone. At least we'd have a better idea of if anyone would be testing positive from vacation week. So I do support the March seventh. If, truth be told, I was talking to many people about this, and I thought maybe middle of March would have been better, probably. But I think the seventh is a very good compromise. So thank you.
Here are no other comments. I just want to make a quick comment from up here. I want to thank you both for coming to make a presentation tonight. Very helpful. When I saw on the agenda, I was excited to see that we can take the mask off. For all the good positive benefits that you mentioned, but hearing the comments from the members here tonight, and also from Mr. Ferreira, who's representing the student body, I do think that pushing off one week to March seventh would be a good idea as well. You know, the presentation was for February twenty-eighth. But I think if we can agree on March seventh, we can move forward. I need a motion to approve the non-renewal of the mask requirement on March seventh. If somebody could make that motion, and by Ms. Martin, second by Mr. Dakota. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Ms. Chau?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yes, approved.
Since we're on the topic of moving items around, does anybody else want to move any item out of order before we go back to the line item that we left off earlier?
Mr. Mayor, you do have a couple of staff members here as well in relation to item six point four. So we have our athletic director, as well as our facilities director, that were here in order to support any kind of questions. You also have two speakers on that particular item as well. So I just raise that to the committee's attention. If you, if you're surfacing that request, Mr. Mayor, I certainly am looking at our athletic director and our facilities director, and I know they would certainly prefer an early evening if that's an offer you're putting forward.
I need a motion from a member to move item six point four up by Ms. Doherty, second by Mr. Dakota. Motion approved. Item six point four, authorization to procure modular units for instructional athletic space at Colley Stadium. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. This request comes to you by way of two separate motions prior to the holidays. We had a motion by prior former committee member, Mike Dillon, who requested us to move forward with this procurement process. We then had a motion by both committee member Lay and committee member Dakota, asking us to put a pause on any type of facility investment until we had information from the city about the facility budget from city council. This motion is being brought to you. Because of those two competing motions, we need your authorization and guidance to move forward. It has been brought to my attention by our facilities department and our academic office, that timeliness is of the essence with this procurement of these modular units, so that our students will have access to facilities at Colley Stadium. There's a question here always, when it comes to facilities, of who should pay for what. So while I don't have the data from the city in terms of their facility investment within their budget as requested by the committee yet, I did have a conversation with the manager, and there is not the plan to include this particular investment within their budget, nor does the city manager see it as possible to include it within the budget for this particular investment. As such, if the committee does not authorize this investment now, at this point, using school district funds, our students could be without facilities altogether at Colley Stadium upwards to the late fall, early winter, based on what our facilities department is projecting about the requirements and the needs in order to procure the units and in order to set them up for students. So the request here is coming to you for authorization, so that we can provide that clarity to our facilities department, so that they can move forward one direction or not move forward at all. Ms. Desmond, if you could, will provide you with a summary. As our chief academic officer, Ms. Desmond has athletics, academics, and the arts within her department, and again, for our community. We see the three As as being all-inclusive of a holistic curriculum for our students, not just academics, but the arts and athletics as well. Ms. Desmond, can you share a summary of what students would have as a result of this decision if the committee chooses to go forward?
Sure. Thank you, Dr. Boyd. Many of you, or most of you probably know that there are facilities out in that area already. The condition of those facilities are such that our students cannot utilize them any longer. There's, you know, holes in the roofs units, there's, you know, mold in the units. They were not intended to be units that lasted for decades, and they have been there since the nineties. So those facilities were used in the past for team meetings, for strength and conditioning, a place for teams to go to work with. a place for teams to go to, to work with teammates and also with the coaches for various purposes. So we are asking that we be able to replace those module units so that we can get them back in a condition where students can get in and access strength and conditioning, they can access meetings with their coaches, they can work on planning and, you know, work on teaming, et cetera. So on page two, you'll see that Ricky Underwood had prepared for us a breakdown of the costs that would be associated with creating these new structures. Also embedded in those costs are things that we would purchase normally for any academic space, such as technology and strength and conditioning equipment. So those items we would, we would purchase anyways. And so what we are most concerned with is the, the condition of the locations that we access at Colley currently. So for example, the locker spaces and the spaces that teams use currently, those spaces could come offline as there is a community effort to restore those facilities. And so I don't know where we will be in the future with regards to that space. So my suggestion would be to move forward with providing this, this space to our students. And all of our student athletes on the 16 teams that were listed here would have access to this space. It would be something that they would schedule and, and utilize accordingly with their coaches.
Before I open up to, to the members here, we do have two registered speakers. We could have the registered speakers speak first. Madam Secretary?
Matthew LaLasha?
Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak. My name is Matthew LaLasha, 39 Perrin Way, to the committee and the mayor and superintendent and members here tonight. I am here on numerous roles as a parent of three public school students, one who is in eighth grade, looking forward to hopefully attending our, our high school, as a graduate who has utilized these facilities, and as the chairman of the Lowell Athletics and Activities Foundation, with the aforementioned community group that is looking to try to help supplement the efforts that both the city and this committee will be hopefully looking to do to make that facility what we all hope it, it can be and should be. And that's why I come before you today, to try to give you an update on where we are in our efforts and, and where hopefully this will play in that process. Hopefully very soon, in conjunction with the city, we'll be able to have a, a larger discussion about what we're looking to, to accomplish at that site. But I can give you the overview, that the intent is to not only fix the grandstands, but to build a fieldhouse that would be the envy of all, of all those north of Boston and east of Worcester. I can tell you that there are numerous private entities that have expressed interest in helping us in that process. But in a best-case scenario, we're looking at probably four or five years before that would be completed, in a best-case scenario. So in the meantime, having walked through the facility that was expressed here and fallen through the floor myself, I can tell you that those facilities no longer are functional for our students. And we're in the middle of looking to hire a football coach. And then said football coach or other coaches that would be utilizing those facilities need to know if their kids are going to have a place to work out, a place to meet in the offseason for captains' practices and other things along those lines. And we don't have that ability right now with the current state of the facility. The other thing that has come up through this entire process, as I've met and discussed what we're hoping to do out there, is so many people have said, we've allowed this to deteriorate, and the city, all aspects, understand where we are now. But when we looked at the high school four, five years ago and had a similar view that things had deteriorated, everybody came together after much discussion and decided we were going to move forward with what was right for the kids. I believe this is part of that same process. This is a continuation of that same process. We made a decision as a city, with the help from the state, that we were going to move forward and we were going to fund what was best for the kids for the high school. This is a next step. As that moves forward, so that there isn't any confusion, the intent here is if we are able to get the fieldhouse, I say if, only because I'd get in trouble if I said when, but when we get this new fieldhouse. These facilities would easily be repurposed on the site. They could easily be utilized at the baseball, softball, lacrosse field, other areas that would be on the site and would still be a necessary part of the redevelopment process. So this is not something that would be wasteful spending if we move forward and get that fieldhouse. The equipment that would go in there could easily be transitioned into the fieldhouse when it's completed, and those facilities could be a nice upgrade for the softball team who doesn't have a facility like this at their field, yet the baseball team does. And that facility, I will tell you, is also in great disrepair. So I come before you just to give you the quick update on where we are in our process. A lot of positive momentum from people throughout the city looking to move forward, but it will be years before we'd be able to supplement this type of a project if it were not to move forward here this evening. So I thank you. I hope you'll consider this as a very important part of a continuation of what we're doing at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt.
Paul Georges?
Do you know if he has the link? Okay. I don't know if he will be on. If he happens to, I'm going to open up the floor now. If he happens to link in, then we can come back to him. So I'm going to open it to the floor. Does anybody have any comments or a question? Mr. Ferrera?
Yeah, I'm in full support of this. I think timeliness is a big part of this, ensuring that especially our football athletes in the fall are going to be able to access a facility like this, because in a sport like football, I mean, lifting and strength and conditioning is probably like half the sport. And then being able to meet and discuss, like say, like plays or whatever, is another big part of the sport. Along with that, we have other, other sports, for example, track and field from personal experience. I remember indoor track and field was the only season that we were able to do strength and conditioning because we were at the high school. We could use that weight room. Losing that when we transitioned to the outdoor season, personally, I felt like I would perform worse in the outdoor season because I didn't have access to the same facilities or strength and conditioning equipment that I did at the high school. So providing this at Colley would just, I feel like, only bring benefits to our athletes at the, at our schools. And yeah, I'm in full support.
Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I put forth a motion several weeks ago about delaying approval of money to be spent on facilities when we are the tenants and we are not the landlords. And following up with that, I would say that if we were to approve this going forward, whatever the amount of, of this project actually included equipment that would be going into those, those trailers, that obviously would fall under our purview. But the remainder of it still, I believe strongly, is the city's responsibility. So far, we're hearing crickets from the city hall, and, and that's disappointing to no end. We've been very patient about waiting to get a response, and I think it's time that, that you, Mr. Mayor, have to really do some, push some buttons on that one, to get an answer from the city manager or whomever it's going to be the one, to say how much money is going to be put into our facilities. That, that said, if we were to go forward with this, I believe that the city does have the whole chargeback issue where they charge the city, the school department for various activities that, and whatever, like snow removal and, and that's, and the like, that perhaps the $1 million six can be taken off of that chargeback as, as, as their way of, of making sure that this is covered. I think that would be probably one of the only ways that I would feel comfortable about this. I'm not, I, I believe that we need to support our, our athletes. It is a, an extremely important part of, of their experience at the high school. And if we cannot offer them this, I think we're, we're selling our kids short. I think we need to do this and be the adults that someone else can't be doing right now. And so I believe that making it happen reluctantly, I, I, I still think we should be putting a codicil on, on this motion to say that we need to get the city on board with this and have them at least give us some indication that they're going to help with this. This cannot just fall on our laps. And it's, and it's falling on our laps because the city has been ignoring these facilities, along with all the rest of the facilities in the city. And now it's, it's time to pay the piper. I, I'm sorry, I don't, I know that sounds callous, but I think we need to really address this. It's being ignored, it's being pushed aside from here and, here and there and all over the place. We need answers. We do need answers. And I don't want to, I don't want to make it sound like I'm an ingrateful person here. I think we've had a lot of things that the city has done recently because they absolutely had to. But, you know, past history is, is a tough one to just ignore. And I think we need to really get answers from the city manager and the city council has to make some determinations as to where they're going to go with this. The city's responsibility. They are the landlords. If, if I was a landlord and I had a, a, a rental property, I would not expect my tenants to have to do the repairs of the, of the bathroom sink, it's got to leak, or the toilet's not working. You know, I, I just don't know how we can get away, how they can get away with that. It's their responsibility. So yes, I do, I will support, support this, but I think with an addendum, I think we need to get the city on board with this. It, it has to happen. If, if it means they, that they deduct that 1.6 million off of the, or, or whatever that we, we come up with, what the, our responsibility is for the equipment that would go in that. So if we deduct that amount, but the amount that's left would be the city's responsibility under any other circumstance. So I think that I, I would like to make that as an amended kind of motion, perhaps, on this, approve it with, with, with an addendum that the city has to agree that's in some fashion to assisting us with this.
So this is a, not, not a motion, does he want to make a motion if you were to vote on this, as to request the city to also look into investing into the project as well?
Well, I think we need to somehow, this has to be approved so that the, the appropriations of, of needed equipment here would be able to be in place for September. So if we delay this any, any time, it might be detrimental to us being able to get that done in a timely fashion. And so I, I would think that we'd have to get this approved on the, right now. And, but have, have, the city is going to have to come forward on this. But we need to, we need to be able to get this out there so that the facilities director can, can pursue that. If, if we delay and wait another two weeks, three weeks, it might just put us out of the running. And I think that, that would be, that would fall on our laps for not following through on it. And I think we need to follow through on this.
So if I hear you correctly, you would want to approve this procurement of the modular, modular unit?
And maybe just come up with another motion?
And then you would have a separate motion?
Pertaining to that?
Maybe after we take this?
Yeah.
Vote on this one, and then I will come back to you and have you make an in-motion to request a, the city to also participate. We'll, we'll work on the language when we get back to you after we take a vote on this.
Does that, does that, do you think that would work to the superintendent?
Well, if I could, couldn't interrupt, I mean, you could make a motion, of course, and it would be, the superintendent would have a discussion with the city manager and
Okay.
she can present it to the city council. But I was going to comment on, on this later. The city council side, we have discussed various times and we have made some commitments to it. We are investing at Colley Stadium. We all put about $5,000 on the field, and this has been planned as Matt, the registered speaker, mentioned earlier, we do have plans to fix the infrastructure at the Colley, but it will take some time. We're looking at different funding sources as well. But until that happens, I think what this, I'm not giving you any sense whether I'm for it or not yet, until we take the vote. But the purpose of this information here, that the vote here, is to have the modular units now, so that way it could help the kids now until the project, the funding from the city side were taken to place and put infrastructure and, and so forth. So it, it is, it is in works on, on the council side. If that's okay. Then, okay, well, well, but before we go take through the, the vote on this one, just a quick question to Mr. Superintendent. I think I might have missed in your prior explanation or Ms. Desmond's explanation, would there be any funding opportunities that could come out of Essor funding for, for this purchase?
Mr. Mayor, I actually think that you have flexibility within your current year budget, within some of the savings that the committee has been considering previously, that you saw prioritized, a prioritized list of possible expenditures from CFO Turner, and she can speak specifically. But I think that would be the most advisable pool of funding that you have, is current year, within-year funding, within a budget adjustment that would come forward to you under a formal transfer, as well as the formal contracting that would come forward to you as early as March 2nd, if we can proceed and we have authorization to proceed. Ms. Turner can share with you specifics, but largely that pool of money is related to vacancy savings due to the nationwide staffing shortages that we've experienced this year. That would be the most advisable pool of money. But yes, we also could look to eligibility of Essor if that be the preferable funding stream for the committee. But our recommendation would be mid-year budget adjustment, meaning within FY '22, not looking forward to future, future dollars. Mayor, while I have the microphone, though, we do have connection with Mr. Georges. As soon as you give us acknowledgement that you're ready, Dr. Hall will make that connection.
Sure. When, I want Mr. Georges to ready.
Ready, ma'am?
Yes.
All right, they should be able to hear you.
You think so? All right, tell me when I can start speaking, because I don't, I can't hear them.
You're okay. Everyone can hear you. We are ready to go.
I can, okay. I, I want to apologize, first of all, for not appearing. I did not get the Zoom link, even though I was scheduled to, to speak. But Attorney Hall has been good enough to sort of geriatric this, so at least I can get an opinion on this. You know, I think, I, I understand the need for, for the, for the, the modules. They've been left, obviously, they have not been maintained for an extended period of time. That's not the responsibility of the school department. That's the responsibility of the city. In another case, we have another, apparently the module is insufficient to either try to recover. They're being advised to be destroyed, which is, which, okay. I understand the need for this easy enough. I understand the infrastructure of the, the stadium is not sufficient to accommodate the needs of the students there. And I think the modules need to be bought. But the question is, who needs to pay for them? If these are cases of facilities, that's exactly what this, this, these modules are. They are facilities. And facilities remain the responsibility of the city of Lowell. We know that the city of Lowell is going to get something in the vicinity of $75, $76 million in additional funding from ABBA, which is federal relief money. Yet at this point, there is absolutely not one committed Yet at this point, there is absolutely not one commitment for $1 of any of that money going into our public schools. I know that various city councillors have asked the city manager on several occasions about this and received no information whatsoever. Yet we're expected to come up with $1.6 million of either Esser money or from our budget to buy these two, essentially mobile classrooms in order to satisfy the needs, the facility needs of the coaches and so on out at Colley. Now, I've heard they use one of them for weightlifting and all that. You know, it's not going to be that long before the field house would be adequate, certainly adequate, 50,000 square feet from my understanding, a weightlifting area within that building that could accommodate that. But notwithstanding that, the point is, the major issue, the key issue, I think the issue that Mr. Dakota was talking about is the overwhelming issue. Is this another attempt just to foist the responsibility onto the school department budget that the city by all rights should be maintaining their buildings and ensuring that there is suitable facilities available for all activities concerning education? This modular unit is not an educational device. It's not going to help teachers in a classroom. It's a facility. And being a facility, it should be the responsibility of the city. And I just want to mention a couple of other things. One quickly is, we surveyed our members several months ago about the highest needs within the city right now or within our schools. And that is additional personnel within the schools to help alleviate the anxiety and try to service the needs of the students in a very productive way after going through the trauma of a pandemic. That's personal, that's capital. And that capital is money, which means you have to pay for those folks that have come in and do a job of trying best to reverse the impact of pandemic on students. Every dollar that gets spent for infrastructure out of our budget, out of the school side budget and Esser money is dollars that can't be spent on personnel to address the needs of our students. When we surveyed our members several months ago, we asked them, and they're the teachers that live in the cold buildings, and they're the teachers that have the problems with infrastructure issues right along, and we've been fighting that battle right along to try to get the city to do the right thing. But when we surveyed our members, which made up of teachers, paraprofessionals, custodian, cap workers, and so on, 90% indicated they thought the greatest, the most significant problem facing us and needing to, need the most attention, it was the, excuse me, the needs of the students of dealing with the pandemic, the results of the pandemic, and that they should continue to put pressure on the city to live up to its obligation to make sure that we have suitable facilities to educate our students. So I'm asking you, I just do not vote in favor of this if possible. Obviously it's possible, you can all decide how you want to vote. But I would ask you not to vote on this at this time until you get some other clarity directly from the city manager or directly from, and we know she's leaving, but directly from the city council about what they're, how much of their $74 or $76 million that they paid to infrastructure improvements in our buildings. Certainly, the buildings don't belong to the school department, they belong to the city alone. It's their responsibility to maintain them. So again, I would not dissuade you from going with this, but supporting this, but only contingent upon significant expenditures toward the end of, the cost of this $1.6 million. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a question from Ms. Turner. Could you tell us where you expect the funding for these modulars to come from?
So as you know, most of our budget is spent on health insurance, staffing, and facility-type projects. As you know, we have a nationwide shortage on staff, so we have incredible vacancy savings. As you know, we've come before you and asked for PBR teachers, social workers, we are trying to do what Mr. Georges said, invest in additional staff. But unfortunately, there aren't enough people to hire. So I sit here and worry about the opposite problem that we usually face. Usually, we don't have enough money, and I would never think we should pay for something for the city if it should fall into them. But right now, we have the opposite problem. We don't have enough staff to hire, we don't, health insurance is probably going to show significant savings too if we didn't hire the full amount of staff that we usually do. We can only buy so much technology because if we buy enough to last three years from now, when you open the box, it will be obsolete by then. So we're limited. If we don't address investing in some facilities or these type of projects that will benefit our kids directly, I don't know, we may end up giving money back. And I hate that idea of giving money back to anyone, the state, the city grants. So where would this money come from? It could come from general funds. We have definitely enough to do that, plus additional endeavors right now, and that's without knowing how much is left in contracts.
Thank you.
Your honor, Mr. Dakota, Ms. Del Rossi, and then Ms. Doherty.
I was curious as to see if there were enough Esser fund monies that we could say, since the Esser funds are ending in 2024, maybe there can be an arrangement with the city to have some accountability and almost like a loan, knowing that we're not going to have these funds in 2024, and can they establish a plan to maybe pay some of it back? I don't know if that's possible, I was just thinking about it, I just wanted to put it out there.
Okay, Ms. Doherty?
Thank you. I actually have a couple of questions. I'm relieved to hear that we have a good bit of money in because I think there are other needs as well. Obviously, we have the staffing needs, that I know we're working hard to get those people in our buildings. But my understanding is also we have overcrowding, let's say, at the STEM Academy, where you don't have enough room for classrooms for all the students there. And I know Ms. Del Rossi has a motion to get a report on that, we'll get more detail. So I guess I'm thinking in terms of if there's going to be plenty of money if we have to do portables for the STEM? There would be, I'm seeing nods, okay. In terms of the number of students who are actually going to be impacted, can, since we have the health director here, can you tell me how many students are going to use these portables?
Did you mean athletic director, Ms. Doherty?
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Health director.
Oh, I meant that, I'm sorry, I meant the athletic director. I misspoke, yes. How many students will be using the portables?
So the portables for strength and conditioning will be able to be used by all of the student athletes, specifically the athletes that travel to Colley Stadium. So that's upwards of 1,000 students. And this is an investment in our students. No student would be precluded from using this facility, even if he or she wasn't a student athlete.
And then in terms of, and this might be more for Mr. Underwood, the options where we could purchase them outright or lease them, so does that mean we could purchase them for how much? Because I don't see that included in here. I think the 1.6 million is just to lease them, right?
No, I'm sorry. So the 482,000 is to buy them, the 6,790 per month is to lease them. With the leasing, you'd have to incorporate the installation charge and the removal charge towards the end. So removal charge would be another $109,000 at the end of the lease. There is a turnover time for it, it's right around four and a half years, five years. So if we were to lease them for four to five years, it would be beneficial us to buy them. So knowing that, you know, we could use these in other places at the field up above or just, we could move them to other spaces, it would be beneficial knowing that where this potential facility that could be built at Colley Stadium is five years out, why would we want to spend that same $400,000 and have them removed and have nothing?
So this proposal is not to lease them, it's to buy?
Well, it's both. The proposal gives you the option of both. So the 3,700 square foot per month is 6,790, 790, I'm sorry, per month, and that's over the course of the four years. So if you tally those together with the installation charge, delivery charges, then the removal charges, we're better off buying them.
Okay.
And then again, we can use them again, you know, in other spaces.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I just would like to say, in regards to my colleague's comments about the city, I think we really do need to sit down, and I know councillors have had motions about having joint meetings with the facility subcommittees. We want to have a sense that the city is going to be a fair landlord and provide us with fair amounts of supports for our facilities. I think that we all understand it's been neglected too long, maintenance of our facilities. We've got some money coming in. Our priority is education and teaching the kids, but we're willing to work with the city. But we do need to have those conversations and, you know, the fact that the superintendent got a pretty much of a no, right, from the city manager that the money is not going to go towards this, we need a sense of what it is going to go to in terms of our buildings so that we can move forward in good faith and collaboration. So I would just say, as chair of the facility subcommittee on the school committee side, I would ask you respectfully, your honor, to try to get those meetings going. And I think we should have a meeting amongst ourselves even before that to really understand where we are with what our needs are, what we've already committed to spending, and what we're hoping to see from the city side. But I do think, I think that the athletic program, like every program that engages our students, is important. But I don't want to see other needs, like what I'm hearing from the STEM Academy, we can't be sacrificing other needs. But it sounds like we have plenty of funding to take care of those as well. So thank you.
Your comments are noted. Madam Secretary, please note that I will ask the chairman of the city council facility to set up a joint subcommittee meeting with the school side. Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Try to be very brief, but perhaps an idea that I'd like to throw out there is, do we have, first of all, do we know how many portables we would need at the STEM to satisfy the space needs going forward? Do we have an idea about that, Mr. Superintendent?
Yes, that's been under some deep and intensive planning with the principal and the STEM community. Mr. Underwood's been engaged in that process with them, which has included additional visits out to other facilities to map that space. That plan will be coming back to the committee. I would say that, given that that item's not on the agenda tonight, I can certainly bring back to you the STEM plan. Mr. Underwood has been engaged in that process, and we can certainly bring that back, and we can have that conversation under separate cover if you'd like. Do you have a specific question, though, that Mr. Underwood can respond to while he's at the microphone?
Well, but why I was asking that portion of the question was, if we were to include that in this proposal, where we're working with a company to get, we should probably get a better deal by, you know, wanting to get more modulars.
Yeah. So we have, we've had contact with the three big companies in the world with classroom modulars. We have been in talks with them, in design talks, on what we're exactly going to need for the STEM Academy. So again, we'll be bringing those two soon. We don't have some, you know, final details on it, but they're all kind of incorporated into each other. If I could jump back on this for one second, there is a timeline on these, I mean, these modulars, because of the time we're in, in the COVID things, lots of communities are looking for space, and there's 24 weeks out in production time on these modulars. In past, we'd be able to look around, deal with other vendors, and possibly buy used modules that are coming out of other places, such as where we only knew we were going to use them for a few years possibly, but that's not the case anymore. So we're looking at 24 weeks out, plus delivery time, plus setup time. So if we had any chance of getting these in for the fall, we really have to make a decision. And I do understand the frustration with the council on not hearing from the city on what they're, but we do have the opportunity to do this. And in my opinion, being a facilities guys, you know, it's, you know, what are you going to do for me if I don't do this for you? We have the opportunity, we have the money right now, we're not going to have the money in a few years. Any positions we play will probably be gone in a few years. I urge this committee to take steps now to make this happen so we can get on to the next thing.
I'm not proposing that we delay that. I'm saying if we could add what we proposed we're going to need at the STEM, would it enhance the deal that you've managed to get from them?
It won't. It won't.
Okay.
These are hot commodities, they're tallied by the square foot and the design.
Okay.
And they're really not playing any games right now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. So I guess I think we have two separate questions that we want to be kind of focused on at this point. I think the first one is to Mr. Underwood's point, that we do need to make a decision tonight about moving forward with the purchase of these units. I believe Mr. Dakota has made a motion, and correct me, but has made a motion that we instruct the administration to move forward with this process and this purchasing with the understanding that it will be coming out of our general fund in this current fiscal year at this point. I mean, I'd second that motion if that's as it stands with Mr. Dakota. I think the second question that we want to have is a much larger one, as has been intimated. And I think it is a matter of are the two bodies, the school committee and the city council, both who are engaged in wanting the best for our students and for our city, and I have no doubt that we can go through this process, seeing the significant support that the council has already put in place to make repairs and investments in our schools. I think the real, the real crux of this that we can, what we should be driving towards is, this is one more project that needs to be included in the full kind of picture of city investment in our schools. Again, we're in a very unique situation where there are funds that we can put towards this. You know, if we're talking a 50-50 split, if we're talking, you know, looking at the overall investments and deciding that, you know, the school department is willing because of the extreme circumstance we're in to make these investments, I have no problem with that. But I think it is a much longer conversation that the two bodies need to have. And I would, you know, to Ms. Doherty's point, bringing together both facility subcommittees to move forward, to make these comparisons, and be able to kind of see what those investments are and be able to compare apples to apples. So I think that would be an incredibly important process. I would recommend that that happen sooner than later, Mr. Mayor, you'll be the kind of convening. Sorry, it's your job. But I think that that would be the best way for us to move forward. And again, we can look at, tonight we are making a commitment to invest in this. Again, I do think it's necessary. I think that, you know, again, this is an investment in our student experience, which is critically important. And I think, my sense is that this body supports that. So I think that's the first move we need to make based on Mr. Dakota's motion. Second is that it's incumbent upon us as a body to be able to work with the council and look at the full picture of investments. This is part of it, but it's by no means even the centerpiece of investments that the council has already spoken about making in our schools. So I would look at those two separate issues, fully supporting Mr. Dakota's motion to move forward with the purchase, and Ms. Doherty's motion to pull together the two facility subcommittees to come up with a more comprehensive understanding of spending.
Ms. Thompson?
I agree with my colleague. I just wanted to add that I think an additional issue is the history of these, of these containers of these modular units. From what I've been told, is that they were left over from the spinners. And so I believe that the city doesn't feel like they're responsibility because it was left over by the spinners organization. So again, this really goes back to having a conversation, finding out who is going to do what, when, where, and why. And instead of going back and forth with, I'm not doing this, you're doing this, because it's honestly, the ping pong of it all is not getting our students what they deserve. And so we need to make sure that instead of having this be, you know, a hamster wheel, we figure out what's going to happen moving forward. I do think it's important, sports is such an important thing, anything with team involvement, and where obviously, in this pandemic, there's been such a with team involvement. And we're obviously, in this pandemic, there's been such a suffering of people being able to do things collectively. I think it's super important. But again, we have to make sure moving forward, because I've listened to these conversations for years as an observer, and now here, I want to make sure that the change is enacted. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Thompson. Just for clarification, Madam Secretary, would you read the motion for tonight by Mr. Dakota to move forward on the procurement of the modular units tonight? And second by Ms. Martin, would we just read the motion for clarity anyway?
You want the first one?
The first one, yes.
So that's approve the procurement of the modular units at Colley?
Yes, by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Martin. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Six shades approved.
And just going back to Mr. Dakota, if I understand correctly, you would like the motion, in motion would be to direct the Superintendent, get an expense report on a CD, the expense report on Colley, expense relevant to Colley, and report back to the School Committee? Is that, would be your interest to get the expense report for that?
Um.
I don't think that was a-
It was, yeah, we want to have the city tell us that since this is a facilities issue as to what they plan on doing, since facilities are their responsibility, not ours. We're willing to do this to, to get this done at this point. So either, either have it removed from the chargeback that the city regularly does with the school department every single year. In, in chargebacks, they charge us for, you know, garbage pickup, they charge us for snow removal, they charge us for rent and water and issue, all of those other issues. So maybe this million dollars or however, whatever number we come up with and agree with, that that becomes their responsibility. And we can remove it from, they can take that, deduct that from the chargebacks. I, I think that would be the fairest way to, to approach this at this point.
I, I don't know if I understand you correctly. I don't know if you meant it as a condition to the vote tonight. That'd be a separate motion to see if, to see if the city would do that, to see if the manager would do that?
I don't know. I think, excuse me, excuse me, Mayor. I think what Mr. Dakota was trying to do was the same thing with the motion that we had, joint motion, a couple of months ago, that we want to invest, but we want the city commitment to, to bring the money, to give us, to refund the money in some sort back to the school department for, for the amount that we spent on. Is that correct, Mr. Dakota? Well, in this case, it would be, in dealing with this particular, the Colley- We're looking for the refund, right? But I think moving forward, we need to have some agreement that we come up with, with the city. And so therefore, I think we need to make sure that we do have a meeting, a joint meeting with the facilities, and maybe the, all, all city councilors with the entire school committee, and we have to have this discussion, open discussion about it with the city manager and CFO and everyone involved with decision-making process. Because this can't go on with having crickets, hearing just a bunch of crickets from City Hall. We need to have answers. And we've asked for this quite some time ago, and, and time is of the essence here. And I know they've got to come up with a budget here in the next few weeks, and, and we're still hearing nothing. And even you're not hearing anything. So, I mean, what is, why the big secrecy and why not being able to share these, these important issues? I, I don't understand why there's such, been such a delay to answering these questions. I, I, I just, it, it boggles my mind. I don't know. We, we need to get some answers before we start making all kinds of financial commitments. We are not the landlords. And, and we keep harping on that, but it's, it's the truth. We're not. We're tenants. And, and if we were, I, I'm going to repeat myself. If I, if I had a landlord, if I'm a landlord, and I asked the tenants, well, you've got to fix the toilet. No, I'm not going to pay for that. You have to do it. Well, I would be in, in a courtroom in two shakes of a lamb's tail in, in, for dealing, doing with that, with my tenant. We are the tenants in our school buildings. The landlord's supposed to be taking care of those buildings. And that, that, you can't take, you can't change that. So we need to get that meeting sooner rather than later, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Yeah, and I certainly agree. And I, I think the most effective mechanism moving forward would be the motion that's, I think, in play by Ms. Doherty to bring together the two Subcommittee's to have this conversation. I mean, I think that's the mechanism where it needs to happen between the two bodies. I do think it makes sense to focus it on the Facility Subcommittee's of each, rather than both bodies altogether. So I, if, again, I would second that motion that I believe Ms. Doherty has made to initiate that meeting of the two Facility Subcommittee's to look at this in a comprehensive way in terms of spending across the board in our, in our district facilities.
Okay. Would you agree with that, Mr. Dakota?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion by Ms. Doherty to have the joint Subcommittee meet as soon as possible. Second by Ms. Martin. On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. The motion's carry. So, that's good. Any other motion that we want to move up the agenda in the interest of saving time? I take that as a no. We're going to motions. Four point one, Mr. Rossi requests Superintendent to report on status of STEM Academy growth, including how many grade levels it now serves, how many sections in each grade, as well as the operation of essential products such as copiers, computers, whiteboards, digital whiteboards needed to effectively teach the vast grade level curriculums. Second by Mr. Dakota. Mr. Rossi should just step out. I should have looked up. I assume that the motion speaks for itself. On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carry. Motion four point two by Mr. Rossi requests Superintendent to report on the implementation of separating students with a forty-eight months difference in age and bathroom procedure at the STEM Academy, Pine Arts, and Bartlett Schools. Second by Ms. Doherty. Mr. Rossi, I assume that the motion speaks for itself. On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carry.
Mr. Mo, Mr. Mayor, could, I mean, would that be good for Ms. Rossi to have an opportunity to speak on her motions?
If she comes back, if she would like to speak, I will allow her to speak. Thank you, Mr. Rossi. Motion four point three, Mr. Rossi requests the Superintendent to report on the immediate facilities repairs that are necessary for our students to be safe and effectively learn, including but not limited to gaps in door openings, hall and classrooms. Second by Mr. Lay. Mr. Rossi?
Motion speaks for itself.
Thank you, Ms. Doherty.
Yes, Your Honor. I'm wondering if we, because we have a number of facilities issues, if we could try to have a, a School Committee Facility Subcommittee soon, so that we can get our ducks in a row before we meet with the City Council. So I would be asking to have the members polled and try to hold a School Committee Subcommittee on Facilities.
Okay.
And some of these items can go right to that, or however the, in terms of the timing with the reports.
So on four point three, you would like refer that to the Facility Subcommittee?
Yes.
Would it be okay by you, Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Second by Mr. Rossi. On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion's carry. Four point four by Mr. Rossi, request Superintendent to report on delay of recent staff payroll. Second by Mr. Dakota. Mr. Rossi?
Yes, thank you. I guess there were several staff at Lowell High that had a delay in their weekly payment salary. So I did, I just wanted to see what was going on with that. That's it. Motion speaks for itself.
There is. Mr. Mayor, on this motion, Ms. Turner is prepared to provide a verbal report tonight, if that is desirable by the committee, and you can get the response to motion immediately.
Yes, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you. Ms. Turner?
Hi. This would be a major concern for me as well. I did investigate it. Just so you know, we do have paper trails from City Hall explaining there were technical issues and unavoidable delays. So then we send it out to our staff. In their defense, they were not late, so no one received their money after the day they should. It's that they're used to getting their pay stubs on Wednesday night, even though the, the actual pay date is Thursday. So we do send out the emails, which we think are comforting, but could probably be alarming to the people when they see something saying they're not going to get it. But we do have a paper trail. If you do want a formal report, I can include those in there. But I do want to also say that I have complete faith, as someone that does get paid by this district, in the City Hall Payroll Department, that there is a new woman, we had four payroll people leave the district. That was decades of institutional knowledge. So four people between the Lowell Public Schools and City Hall Payroll Offices, and they're doing amazing. But they do, they are facing an ancient, like an archaic system. They were already at the brink of, like, breaking because they're understaffed. And with all of the additional money coming in due to COVID, all of the additional, you know, it's just a perfect storm. We are, the, the new lady, Imra Mazerati, she's very skilled and very eager to make improvements. But unfortunately, due to all of the obstacles we have been facing with COVID and staff shortages, we are not able to quickly implement some of the changes that we have come up with. But again, we did, we were not late. It was just a late, you know, deposit. They did get paid on Thursday. It's just that they see it Wednesdays normally. But we hope that doesn't happen, obviously, again. But if you need a formal report still, I can put this in a document so that you can read it at your leisure.
No, thank you. It's understandable. I, I know what it's like to, like, not get paid, like, I'm. But I get it. But thank you. No, it makes sense. New staff, you lost a lot of people that, and at least people are aware of it still now. So thank you very much.
Hearing no other comments, motion is approved. Four point five, Ms. Thompson motion to request the district create and host designated focus groups for students' input on the spending of ARPA funds for the district. In these focus groups, space will be made for students to hear about the ARPA funds, and then share ideas of how they may envision the use of money for the betterment of their schools and overall educational experience. Second by Ms. Martin. Ms. Thompson?
I would actually like to amend this to include ESAR funding as well. So I don't know how to do that, but I'd like to just amend that to add ESAR funding as well. I think it's important. We talk a lot about our students, so I think it's important to make sure that they're fully engaged in what's happening around them. And, you know, there's all these funds, and people talk about ARPA and ESAR, and people have no idea what those are, and how, you know, we need their input because we want to make the school experience good for them. So that's the most, that's the crux of this motion.
An objection to make an amendment to adding the ESAR fund to be opposed motion. Motion approved. Mr. Ferrera, comments?
Honestly, an amazing motion. One thing, being in this position, I realize that there's a big disconnect between what's actually done at these administrative meetings and our student population. And I try to bridge that disconnect, but having these focus groups would honestly, like, make both my job easier, but also connect students to, or help better the students' understanding about, like, where all these resources are coming from, and better understand how our schools are run outside of, like, say, like our principals or, like, deans at the high school. So, yeah, it's just a great motion. It gets our students more involved with the administration of our school.
Mr. Dakota, do you have a comment? No, okay. Hearing no other comments. On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. The motion's carry. Four point six, Ms. Thompson motion to request professional development support surrounding mental health signs, symptoms, triggers, and basics of support for classroom teachers, parents, and support staff. This professional development would be designed to provide overall knowledge, general context, classroom management assistance, while supporting both school professionals and the students. Second by Mr. Dakota. Ms. Thompson?
You know, we've been talking a lot about mental health and the breakdown in mental health and the need, the extreme need. But I think what we're also really not, really concentrating on or putting a lot of focus on is the fact that the teachers are the first experience, they're the first people that are experiencing the mental health needs of our students. And I think that it's important and really integral for them to be, feel prepared in the classroom, to feel supported in the classroom, to know the basics so that they can indeed support our students. This is actually, this motion was actually, a student at the Daily was really, you know, integral in this motion being formed. So again, I just ask that everybody support this motion.
Seeing no other hands. On favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. The motion's carry. Five, reports of the Superintendent. We have one, two, three, four, five, starting with five point one, COVID-19 update. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Five point one, I would submit as a report of progress, the discussion, the pertinent discussion on COVID update you previously had related to the mask mandate.
Any other comments? Hearing none. Five point two?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With this report, it's within the packet. It's an extensive report within the packet as an update on an important initiative within the district. The committee as a whole is aware, I believe, of our advancement within our one-to-one initiative across the district and the significant investments made in technology. Ms. Desmond has been leading this extraordinary work. Ms. Desmond, can you provide a quick summary? And then we would submit this report as a report of progress as well.
Thank you, Mayor and Dr. Boyd. This, this is our newly created digital learning plan. It has been a couple of years in the making. There's, just quickly, I'm not going to go through all the slides, but there's the committee members. The committee was representative of teachers, principal, central office personnel, to include our special education office and our technology office. The team met weekly to develop an extensive plan. And embedded within this presentation is portions of the plan, to, to give you an example, which include the strategic initiative that is district-wide, the action and activities that are required to meet that initiative, who's responsible, how we're going to evaluate progress, and the timeline. So I'm not going to go through every single slide, but I just wanted people to have the information. What I would like to just point out is, at the end, the second to last slide talks about the current staff that we have in the IT Department. You'll notice that we had, had added last year, and thanks to the committee for approving these additions, a Director of Technology, some part-time technicians. And then we've strategically moved our instructional technology specialists into the department so that we can have a holistic approach to how we're addressing professional development of our staff with our new technology, and how we're supporting schools specifically in the area of integrating technology into the classroom, and integrating educational lesson planning within the, embedding the technology into the lesson planning. So our instructional technology specialists are out at CPT's, working with teachers. They're in classrooms, helping teachers to integrate the ClearTouch panels into everyday activities, and supporting the one-to-one Chromebook distribution for our students, and how teachers are utilizing that, that technology within the classroom as well. The next steps that are immediate, that we need to look at- as well. The next steps that are immediate to, that we need to look at for our, our budgeting process for next year is really the addition of some, uh, uh, part-time technicians to just help support, um, uh, our, our teachers, and also our, um, staff in general across the district with any, um, you know, troubleshooting that needs to happen. Um, we also have a lot of, um, Chromebook, um, wear and tear that we're always repairing, and so we really do need to consider, um, adding some part-time positions. Part-time positions tend to be much more flexible as far as hours and time. So, um, that, those two positions are definitely needed for our next, um, budget, uh, consideration. And then also, um, the new devices that we need to consistently purchase at grades one, five, and nine, so that we are ensuring that students' devices are always, um, up to date. So, uh, you'll see in the plan that we continually want to, um, purchase devices and distribute them in these grade levels so that students don't have a di- device for more than four years. Um, so that also is something that we, we will need to consider for the next budget season, and, and just to help maintain that one-to-one environment that we've worked so hard to achieve at this point. And then finally, ClearTouch panels. We purchased five hundred twenty-six ClearTouch panels last year, um, thanks to the committee, and, uh, we've overwhelmingly heard that teachers really enjoy this technology. Um, they're utilizing it consistently within classrooms, but there are some classrooms that we were not able to provide this technology to, and so we would like to finish, uh, that acquiring of, uh, ClearTouch panels so that, uh, we can get, uh, ClearTouch panels in every classroom and upgrade, uh, some of the existing, uh, panels i- in classrooms that are now about four years old. Uh, so I just bring those three items, point those three items out, because those will be consideration for the next, um, budget season.
Mr. Superintendent, anything else?
Mr. Mayor, we submit that as a report of progress. Uh, five point three, the key performance indicators, we would submit that as a report of progress as well. The key conversation related to these indicators will come up to the committee again, uh, within a discussion around six point three. Uh, as we've been discussing around the immediate needs due to chronic absenteeism through, uh, the recent surge in COVID-19, the committee was, did discuss this at the past meeting. We had committed to bringing back to you an additional discussion here this evening. Uh, that conversation will occur at six point three, so I would submit, uh, five point three as a report of progress, and entertain that discussion at six point three, if the committee is so willing. Uh, Mr. Mayor, that would be my recommendation.
Uh, so you're recommending to take up six point three at this point?
You could do that, Mayor, or I could just simply submit five point three as a report of progress, and when we get to six point three, we can take up the discussion at that time.
Yes, let, let's do that.
Thank you. Five point four is submitted as a report of progress. This is your standard report around, uh, student enrollment. Uh, it's submitted for you. Ms. Phillips is available if there are any questions around five point four.
Any comment, Ms. Dory?
Are we on the school assignment update?
Five point four, enrollment point.
I lost my place on the agenda. Um, I did have a couple of questions, um, concerning some of these students that are still waiting for placements. Do we know how long, uh, they've been waiting? Because I know you mentioned, uh, twenty-two are recent registrants, and then on the next page you talk about some that are new. Uh, and I'm just wondering, what percentage of them have been, and how long, like, how far back does it go that we have students registered or trying to register and, and attend school? That would be to you, to the superintendent, or?
Ms. Phillips?
Yep. Mr. Mayor, school committee members, so we do have that data. Um, I can go back and, and compile that and give it to you, um, in a few days. We do have some students, um, going back, um, I believe we had maybe one or two from October, but they are, um, extreme cases in that, in that, um, circumstance, and I can share with you what, what those, you know, outlier cases would be. Um, there are, um, some students from December. Um, we are finding a tremendous challenge. Um, you'll see in the report that, that maybe three-fourths of our new students, um, are immigrant families, are newcomer families, and, um, we're having tremendous challenges with, with getting all of the paperwork in. We are making home visits, um, to, to, um, we have to put in tremendous efforts to, to get the paperwork, um, back from some families.
Uh, thank you. I have a fault, could have a follow-up on that. So, the other issue that, that I'm concerned about is the number of students who come in where English is not their first language. I mean, we have been a gateway city forever, right? Uh, what are we talking about in terms of waiting periods? Because the, the process had always been, at the Family Resource Center, we would test them to find out where they, what their level of English competency is, and that happens before they're actually placed into a school. So, do you have a sense of, for these numbers of students where English is not their first language, which is not new to Lowell Public Schools, what are we looking at for getting those testings done so that we can get them? I mean, obviously, the goal for everyone is get them attending school, right? So, do you have any information on the waitlist?
Um, so I can get that information for you, the details, but I can share that testing is not one of the holdups in our, in our placement process.
Okay. And then, final, uh, question. At the last meeting, I had asked about the, I know this committee funded, I think it was thirty thousand dollars for a consultant to, I, I thought it was to audit the Family Resource Center. It was based on a recommendation that, uh, Dr. Boyd made, and, um, you were going to provide us with information about the consultant that had been hired, and the scope of that, what, whether it's an audit or, I, I, I actually need clarification on that. I thought it was an audit. Maybe it's a reorg. Um, but I'm, I didn't see it in the packet. Were you going to tell us that tonight, or did you have a, a follow-up on that?
We'll bring back that update and those findings once that's concluded. Uh, that is in the process of initiation. We've got to identify and secure the vendor or partner, and then we will conduct that audit, and then we will provide those findings back to the committee once they are, once they conclude.
Ms. Dory?
I think you misunderstand my questions. We've already identified the consultant and funded it, I believe. With this, we voted thirty thousand toward it. My question is, has to do with what are we funding? What are we getting from the consultant? What's the scope of the work, the timeline? What can we expect back from them? That sort of, those things.
Ms. Phillips, do you have further, uh, update beyond what I provided?
Yes. So, we did have an original scope of work when the, um, consultant was approved. Um, that contract has been in a, in a waiting process, and I have to go back to the consultant and, and see what now can be, um, you know, what within the scope of work can still be met within the timeframe that we, um, in which we need it to be, to be met. So originally, we did hope for the work to be completed, um, by the first week of March, um, but we still are awaiting the, um, the contract to be officially awarded. So, um, once we get a timeline for when that can be awarded, I'll be able to figure out what we'll be able to do, um, with the remaining time.
Any other comment? And I think we have one more item. Uh, Mr. Superintendent, five point five, home education?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This, uh, this is the standard report on home education. It's submitted to the, the committee for your information, uh, and submitted to you for approval. If there are any questions, Ms. Desmond is available.
Any comments or questions? Hearing none. Five point, now we're going to go to the motion.
Need a motion to approve, then.
Okay. I need a motion to approve, place on file, by Ms. De Rossi. Uh, Ms. Dory?
I think you need a motion to approve.
Oh, what?
These children being home educated, and it has to be a roll call vote. So, I would make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dory. Need a motion, uh, to approve home education by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Dory. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Five point six, supplemental response on motion by Mr. Dakota, feasibility of neighborhood schools. Any comment, Mr. Dakota?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'm getting, uh, some, you know, very negative, um, input as to the availability of that pro- property that I've been talking about for nearly six years. Uh, I would think that it would be ho- hoof the city to move on this property sooner, like, yesterday, compared to waiting yet another, what, six years since I've been proposing that? Like, it's ridiculous. This is a property that would solve so many issues that we have in the school department going forward. We have, uh, a proposal from the Transportation Director who has worked out all of the numbers that would work only if we can create another middle school for Senaval and/or Christian Hill. So, this school, this property would solve that issue, and then some. And then we could also, even if necessary, we could move central there and saving, save the rent that we currently are spending on that. So, going back to neighborhood schools would save around a million dollars every single year, and it would save, I don't know, what, we, is it three hundred seventy-five thousand per year, uh, for the lease of downtown? Uh, so, it, this would pay itself off in a very short order. And so I think that would be a, a good thing to pursue this property, uh, if it, if in fact it's still available, uh, and, and not, not waste any more time on that to, to, to acquire this property before it gets sold off to somebody else, as some developer. And I'm sure the neighborhood would not appreciate that very much. So, going forward, I think we, it would be much more advantageous for this neighborhood. This was my old parish. I grew up in this parish, uh, that, that got closed. Uh, if you look at the picture that was, uh, in, in with this packet, uh, it, it really doesn't show you necessarily, uh, how big this property it really is. It's huge, uh, and the buildings that are on it are, there are lots of them. There, there, there's an empty convent, uh, there's a, there's an empty twenty-four classroom building, and an empty church that could easily can be converted into two stories and, of, of facilities, uh, and an empty rectory that could easily be, could house other offices. Uh, and there's a huge lot of land that go, that's attached to it. So, I, I think we, we really should be not ignoring this property. It's something that, it, it, from the city's perspective, it hasn't been a taxable property, like, forever, uh, and, and they could put great use for us if, if we could acquire it. Uh, and from what I understand, uh, it's not a very, uh, very expensive property to have to acquire. Uh, I think it would be to our advantage to get that, so. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, maybe, um, I've got my quick comment related to that. Maybe I can ask Mr. Superintendent to speak with the city manager, um, to see if any, uh, possibility of revisiting that property again, per Mr. Dakota, uh, request. No other comments on that. We'll go to five point seven, response to motion two, COO of one, five twenty-two, by Ms. Dory regarding end-of-year financial report. Ms. Dory?
Uh, thank you, Your Honor. Just a couple of quick comments. Uh, thank you for this report. Um, I, I have to say, in my fourteen years, I'd never seen a letter like the one that came from Desi, although I can appreciate, uh, Ms. Turner points out that apparently Desi sent that similarly threatening letter to about forty other districts out of the three hundred and fifty-something in the state. I would say that doesn't provide much comfort to me, um, because it was a disturbing letter threatening to withhold our, our state funds, which we rely on quite heavily. Um, I do understand the staffing shortage. Seventy percent of the finance staff has left, uh, which, I know we are seeing a lot of movement, uh, with people because of COVID, but I think the most important thing from this, well, for me, there's two things. The most important thing is that going forward, we are cross-training people in the finance department. It's not going to be just one person who knows how to do this. Uh, but secondly, just going forward, I know I would have preferred if this had been on the floor as a communication, which the level of, um, gravitas, if I can use one of Ms. Martin's words I don't usually use, um, of a letter, a threatening letter from the Deputy Commissioner of Desi saying, "We're not going to give you the money." It deserve, it needed to be on the floor for us to discuss an open, transparent government. That I would have preferred than an email that was sent, uh, and then no, no follow-up report except for me asking to get the report, because I think that we, we need to have that trust with each other, that sometimes people make mistakes. I get it. I make mistakes all the time, daily. Um, but to know that we're going to work together to do it better. So, um, the important thing for me is that we are going to be doing the cross-training going forward, and the important, um, point I want to make is that to please provide us with this type of information, uh, in an open, transparent way, the way we're supposed to work as a full committee in, in the view of the public. Thank you.
Any other comment? Hearing none. Five point eight, response to motion four, COO of one, nineteen twenty-two, by Ms. Thompson regarding the frequency of HVAC unit filter changes. Ms. Thompson?
So, I appreciate this report. I have to say, um, in reading it, I was a little bit alarmed. Um, I was alarmed that there, in this current climate with COVID being what it is, that this has not been a, a typical practice. Um, I'm glad that moving forward, that it will be something that is looked at, and the, um, you know, the ongoing nature of keeping up and paying attention to all the pieces and parts that are part of our facilities will be, um, you know, up kept. But this was a little shocking to me, and I think that this, for me, goes back to that, you know, who's going to handle what thing that I talked about earlier, the ping-ponging and, um, or the hot potato, whichever analogy you'd like to use. Um, but that, that lack of responsibility and who's going to do what, we have to just squash that and just figure out who's doing what. So, I appreciate the report, but I was a little alarmed by that.
Seeing no other hands, going down to next item, five point nine, response to motion nineteen, COO of one, nineteen twenty-two, by Ms. Doherty, to seek advice from mask and mask regarding staff shortages. Ms. Dory?
I thank you for the report. I appreciate the timeliness of it, and I think it speaks to the fact that we're all in this boat together, in terms of the staffing concerns, um, and just thank you for the report.
Hearing no other comments. Five point ten, response to motion three, COO of one, nineteen twenty-two, by Mr. Rossi regarding maintenance and repairs expenditures. Mr. Rossi? No comment, thank you. Five point eleven, response to motion thirteen, COO of two, two twenty-two, by Mr. Rossi regarding ESAR positions. Mr. Rossi? Thank you again. Need a motion to accept report of the superintendent, five point one through five point eleven, as reports of progress by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Dory. All in favor say aye, opposed say no, the eyes have it. Motion is carry. Six, new business, six point one, we already, we know we have not, a six point one budget transfer. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The requested budget transfers for this meeting are within the packet. Uh, recommendation is approval as written. Ms. Turner's available if there are any questions.
Any question or comment? Seeing no hands. Need a motion to approve a budget transfer of a hundred fifty-seven thousand, one hundred thirty-one dollars, ninety-nine cents by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Dory. Roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
We have already taken up six point two. Now we're going to six point three, consideration of temporary adjustment to students' attendance policy. Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is coming before the committee again, within this theme of timeliness. We have to engage in conversations with our families regarding this policy now. We've been engaging families on an ongoing basis, but given the recent surge in COVID-19 as you as you've seen within our data, there's been a direct and significant negative impact on attendance that has caused us to more closely examine all related policies. Mr. Skinner's been providing guidance and has been facilitating these conversations with our principals as they facilitate conversations with families about the impact of attendance on academic outcomes and the impact of attendance on their decisions for promotion, retention, and intervention. Based on those discussions, we are recommending a temporary adjustment within this meeting to these policies to align and to ensure continuity and equity across conversations with families. This is a temporary adjustment because we know that the committee has a standing procedure of moving to subcommittee discussion and subcommittee first reading and second. However, the timeliness of this is important because these conversations are currently taking place within our schools. Mr. Skinner will provide you with a summary of what the request is here in terms of temporary adjustment. We'll walk you through and also share with you how this supports the continuity across our schools, consistency across our schools, and equity in service for our families, but also recognizing that a more thorough discussion is warranted. Here, we are simply suggesting a temporary adjustment within the current year so that we can engage these conversations in clarity with our families and in alignment with the desires of this body. Mr. Skinner, if you can, can you walk the committee through these adjustments as recommended?
Before you continue, Mr. Superintendent, we're going to allow...
And I'm sorry to jump in the middle, Mr. Skinner.
To make a more...
Obviously, you're anticipating what I'm going to say, because I really do think that this kind of a policy change does warrant a subcommittee meeting to get into the, I mean, this is substantive. I understand the timely nature of it, and I, you know, again, we run into this all the time, but the reality is, is that nothing happens next week. There's nothing happening in the district next week. We can have our meeting and be able to do a subcommittee to really dig into this and be able to hear from those principals, be able to hear from those teachers, the staff who've been involved in crafting this. Again, appreciate that we need to move on this quickly, but I do think that, you know, the sands have been shifting this entire, well, the last two years, let's be real, and I think that this is, even if this is going to be something that is just kind of in place for the remainder of this year, it is substantive enough that I do think it warrants the conversation, particularly around, and I will just say for myself, as to fair warning, what I want to hear about is what these individualized plans are going to look like, how they're going to get developed, how we're going to be held accountable for them to students and to families. To be brief, it's a big deal, and I want us to be able to have this conversation with the people who'll be responsible for implementing it. So, if I could make the recommendation that this be referred to the policy subcommittee for as a meeting as soon as possible, with any luck, next week, so that then at our next meeting, we'd be able to take action.
Thank you. Ms. Martin, would you clarify on the exact subcommittee name?
Well, this is a policy, so in my mind, it's going to the policy subcommittee, but I know that we have some conversations about that.
Yeah, we have the previous conversation.
If there's somewhere else you'd like it to go...
There's policy in every subcommittee, which, do you have a specific subcommittee, the main category in mind that you would like to refer this to?
Curriculum? I defer, do you have an opinion?
Ms. Doherty?
So, I have two options for you. I think that we could go back to what the policy subcommittee has always previously been, which was to look at all the policies, or we could do a special meeting of the school committee, but I totally agree with my colleague. We can't make these decisions in a rush. We don't, I'm looking for more data. We've had two years of this pandemic. We don't, my colleague to my right here has been talking many times about what are we doing for the loss of learning? So, we've got attendance issues, we've got grading issues, and it has a severe ripple effect. We make a change right now, what's the impact on the students from last year? I think there's a lot more information we need to have, and it's not the kind of decision that I'm going to make, we shouldn't make in a snap without getting all the information we need. So, if the body would prefer, we always would have sent it to the policy subcommittee, the way policy always used to be, which was discussing the policies, or we can just have a special meeting of the school committee, and I think we should try to do it next week.
I think based on my quick learning curve from the last time about policy subcommittee, maybe it's best to refer to the, maybe have a special meeting. I would like somebody to make a motion for that. Good motion by Ms. Martin, second to, you amended to special meeting, Ms. Martin, second by Ms. Doherty. Sure.
I just want to add one more thing. It's 8:45 at night. This discussion about this issue deserves to be the complete focus of a meeting. It's not to be decided at 8:45 at night, when we've all worked all day and we're exhausted. We need to be, and I'd be happy to provide an email list of the questions I have rather than say them on the floor, because there's about 12 right off the top of my head, that I think we need to have before us before we start making these kind of moves.
All right, and some points were taken. The motion has been second. Let's do a roll call, Madam Secretary.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent, if you could hold the members tomorrow to see when will be the best and the quickest time to do the special meeting, that'd be great.
Thank you. I do appreciate that. I would suggest to the committee, next week, we do have a lack of access to staff, as well as then the following week, you do already have a committee meeting already scheduled. I would say, just to want to make sure that I record within the minutes, there are zero tolerance aspects to the current policy that have not been implemented historically with fidelity within this community. These zero tolerance policies would have a negative impact on students, hence the reason to bring this to you now is to align your policy with actual practice as we understand it within the district. So, the adjustment here was adjusting the language of your policy to create consistency with historic practice across the district, so you didn't have these inequities occurring across the district. The reason for policy is to create standardized practice across the district. That's currently not the case. The reason that the spotlight is on it is because of the need right now for greater consistency, given the gravity or the scale of impact due to COVID-19. So, right now, your policy, as stated, is a zero tolerance policy that will necessitate and should have necessitated previously that we notify families of immediate retention. I want to be clear, and I want to be transparent. Those conversations have not historically taken place. They have not taken place with families of the automatic retention of all students that have crossed these thresholds, so I just want to make sure that I'm clear in honoring my responsibility to implement your policies. The coaching and guidance that has been provided to schools right now has been the coaching and guidance to meet students' needs and to make sure that we intervene and provide the proper intervention to meet the needs of students and families. In all cases, that has not been a zero tolerance retention. So, I only say that to make sure that we are unified as one voice in terms of providing clarity to our schools, because the policies themselves should provide that clarity, and it is my understanding at this current point that historically, there has not been complete alignment with the policies that have been on the books across schools here, and I don't want our school leaders and those that have been implementing on behalf of students to be, in some ways, communicated with, that they are out of alignment with a policy that has been on the books for years and has not been implemented consistently. That was the reason to bring it to you for a temporary adjustment, is so that you could align your policy with what historic practice has been, because there is a spotlight on this particular policy, given the impact of COVID-19. The longer-term discussion would need to take place. However, we are actually already past the time that we should be having these conversations if this policy were the will of the body to impose. Those conversations should have already taken place with all families across the board, and the reason that they have not is because historically, they have not. And Mr. Skinner, as a longtime principal in the district, was prepared to share with you tonight what the historic practice was and what this request was, and why we felt it was beneficial to move in a temporary adjustment so you could engage in the very in-depth discussion of getting your policies updated to where the committee believes the standard of the community is currently in 2022. So, with that, Mr. Mayor, I will work to schedule it, and I would ask that the record reflect my message here to the body tonight.
Thank you. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much. I think we are all looking forward to having this meeting. I will say, if in your statement, you're basically telling us that this is a policy that has been ignored by the district, that's unfortunate. It may be historic. I was not aware that there was a policy that was being ignored throughout the district. Perhaps that will put a different spin on this meeting that we're now going to be having, which is unfortunate, because I do think that we were, my intention was for us to have this meeting, be able to put in place these changes that will help our students during a particularly challenging time for students and families here in the city of Lowell. So, I think, you know, the whole purpose was to put this into a context where we could have these conversations in a positive way, being able to keep our focus on what our students need and ensuring that we're accountable to them in the way we change our policies. It's discouraging to note that apparently, this is a policy that's been ignored within this district historically, so that's unfortunate, but I guess it does give us an opportunity now to actually engage with the topic and ensure that the policies passed by the Lowell School Committee are actually implemented within the Lowell Public Schools. Thank you.
Yeah, I think just to note, Mr. Mayor, if I could, that it was adopted in 1975, so the policy here you have is 1975, so I just want to note that there's not, I don't think it's ignoring, I think it's a lack of consistency, as it's been brought to my attention with implementation, so that was the note. This is a 1975 policy, so thank you.
Thank you. This section has been referred to the special meetings. I know that many other members would like to speak on it, but given the time and that it's going to be discussed in more detail, Ms. Del Rossi, we can discuss that in a special meeting. It's worthwhile to take the time to discuss in detail. Thank you. We took up 6.4 already. We now go to 6.5. Need a motion to accept the donation from the Billy Marcus Foundation by Ms. Thompson, second by Mr. Lay. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Do we need a roll call on this one?
Yes.
Okay. Madam Secretary, roll call, please.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Seven, convention and conference request. Need a motion to...
To bundle them all?
Motion by Ms. Martin to bundle, second by Ms. Doherty, approve. The motion 7.1, 7.2, 7.3, 7.4, motion by Mr. Dakota, second by Ms. Doherty. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. Do we need to do, we need a roll call again?
So, that's one motion. It's by Ms. Martin.
Okay.
Ms. Thompson?
Yes.
Mia Chow?
Yes.
Mr. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Mr. Dakota?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Eight, professional personnel. Do we have anything on that section? Nothing. Number nine is adjournment, motion by Mr. Dakota, second by Mr. Lay. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, say no. The ayes have it. Motion is carried. Have a great night.